Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
...... Monday, January 6th, 2020 at 5:46, did I just say? Yeah, 5:45, we'll round it down a little bit. Ledge Allegiance, since Ms. Carey's business for her allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adjustments to the agenda. Just a few more minutes for December 16th.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes for December 16th, 2019. We do have one, so under others in attendance, Edie Cole came in late, so she was there.
And was it Rick Schuman there for a while?
Yes, he was.
Any other comments, suggestions, changes, recommendations? Further discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes as adjusted, say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Communication and public comments? Policies, non-superintendent, central office staff.
I see that you didn't get a copy of our report.
I did. Shattered.
It's in the drive.
Is it in the drive?
Yeah, it's in the boardroom in the drive.
So... Maybe a principal could speak while I'm getting it?
Sure. Well, I can just give a brief update because it seems like we were just here, but let's see.
It also seemed like a long time ago.
It does. Our enrollment's the end of '85. We finally had our circus performance on Friday, and it was awesome. The first time, I think I shared it was postponed because of ICE, but it was awesome. We had a great turnout and great community support and lots of fun and stuff, all. Winter math assessment window has opened, and we'll be assessing on January 8th, 9th, and 10th with makeups thereafter. Winter sports starts tomorrow for grade level four, and we'll be gardening on January 8th. During the time that the staff are, that the students, I should say, are away tomorrow afternoon, I'll be working with staff on professional learning, so that was nice that we had enough volunteers that we were able to do that. And let's see, without reading challenge, we have lots of awards to give out at our all-school meeting on Wednesday. We have one student that's already read 40,000 pages, but I have the breakdown, but it's pretty impressive, and I can't wait to do that. And apparently, I'm taking three of them to lunch at VA as part of their reward, so that'll be an experience for me, too. And we are in the beginning stages of planning our family literacy and math night with a Dr. Seuss theme scheduled for March 5th.
Excellent. Pete?
Yeah, I didn't realize we were presenting.
You have reports at first.
Yeah, it's okay if you say. I've got starting winter testing.
We just got back from school.
Math testing. And then first grade swimming starts tomorrow. We'll be there with Saxons at the same time, which should be interesting. I understand they're actually closing the pool for us.
I bet, because we have a lot of kids going.
At Edgar M?
At Edgar M, yeah. Enrollment is up to 161, and so, only three days back, so.
So you guys, are you guys taking that, I guess it's a little early, I just wondered if you're taking any opportunity to get the kids to mingle a little bit, know each, some of them, I assume, probably already know each other.
Yeah, well, for us, it's, so it's our first grade swimming program, it's for them, it's the winter sports program, so it's going to be kids of all ages.
Right, one through grade one.
So are you guys going to be having lessons, or free play?
Yeah, kids have lessons, yeah.
No, we have lessons, too.
You have lessons, too?
Yeah. I don't know how they're going to do it, too, I was picturing, and I'd never been there, but good for them.
It was their plan to take it on that way, from what I understand, so.
Interesting. It'll be interesting to hear how that goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's...
There'll be just one.
We're sending it, 32, how many are you sending?
We're sending 32.
32, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be noisy.
Ms. Bukowski?
So I uploaded my December enrollment into the drive. We have eight more students than we did for December of last year. So, you know, but our enrollment is pretty much holding, you know, steady. The day before break, that half-day, we took the whole school down to the Opera House to see the movie Elf, and had a winter celebration where they each had popcorn and water, so they'd go with it, and timed it, so when they came back, we served lunches and threw lunch pears, and that was that. If you drove by and the fire truck was still out there, special kudos to Sean McGinnis, he's working on our ice skating rink, so we can add ice skating this year to the P E.
Were you doing that on that side?
On the green space.
The green space.
Mm-hmm, ice skating, some broom ball, snow and stuff, so.
I saw on there's, one day last week.
Yeah, they were skimming it.
Sean and Rick were out, kind of standing in the middle with their hands in their pockets, and Guy Tonner was out there, like they waved as I drove by.
Yeah, I, you probably just missed me, because we were out there talking, they were talking about how they wanted to lay it out, and then they brought the bobcat and skimmed off the layer of snow that was there to start building the banks, and we were to put down plastic and...
Where'd they get the bobcat from?
From the village, Wendy Nelson brought, sent it over after we finished the streets.
Thanks, thanks to the town of...
Yes, definitely, definitely. So kind of looking forward to that, and we've got, you know, I've been putting in my parent notices, taking donations for ice skates since beginning of school year, and we've gotten a lot, we've got a ton of donated ice skates, so that'll be really helpful as well. While we're talking about winter sports, the Sunday ski program begins this Sunday at Magic Mountain. I'm going to go there, since I spent a lot of time kind of working with them, bringing it together, just to see, you know, how that is all going to come together, and see the planning and discussion, and, you know, a little bit of scramble there with Okemo letting the snow connect at the last minute, that it was continuing out. Some really happy magic picked it up, and looking forward to us being able to establish a relationship with them. And we will be doing our math testing on January 14th and 15th, and if we have snow date, we would push it just back to the 16th, because the whole school today, so. That's pretty much where we're at right now. It's not, I haven't been back too long, so.
How did the ski sale go this year?
They raised, I have it here in my notes, $2,700, and, you know...
A little low, but not bad.
Yeah, about the same, about the same as, you know, they're usually hovering around $3,028, so yeah, it was a little bit over $2,700 at the last that I heard, so I think that was the final amount, so.
Any questions for any of the principals? Are you preparing that, Pam?
Yes, thank you. So you folks can share, I've got a copy, it's probably there now, and you can look at it. I hope that you look at this online, because the colors are wonderful. So Chris talked about his VSA, VSBA conference in November. He also talked about the United States Hearing Panel for Educators. He talked about the WNESU Leadership Team Professional Development Training. We're reading the book Dare to Lead, and there's some pictures. We also had our first round of grade level meetings throughout the district, so that grade levels can meet from different schools, to look at their data and share strategies. And so we talked, he talked a little bit about Let's Talk Action Rockingham Community, and that was on the 4th of December. A lot of us went to different meetings. I think I was there with Mr. Holloway, Holloway? No, what day was that, that we were at?
At what?
The Senate.
Oh, yes.
Was that on the 4th?
Fourth or the 5th.
Yeah, so, so we did that, we met, we talked, we talked a little bit about homelessness, and they talked about the, it was the Housing Committee talking about the shortage, shortage of equitable housing in Rockingham. So he talks a little bit about the College of Education and Social Services. You can see the schedule for the leadership team meetings, the documents and the things that we spoke about, and there's a lot of pictures, they're nice in color, about people using these kits here, these UBT, UB Tech kits that Chris got a grant for for students. I talked about, a lot about some background information about our Consolidated Federal Grants and the different functions. So we have our homeless liaison we talked about, and her position is supported by the grant. She reaches out to a lot of local businesses, churches, she was able to get a lot of stuff this year for families in need. We also sent a thank you to the, there was an article from the Senate hearing in the paper, but I also sent a thank you for all the folks that were helping us this year. We have a tobacco use prevention grant, and we have a tobacco team, Heather Royes, Oriana Baez, and Michelle Harrington, and they teamed up with Medical Care Systems Title One, Greater Falls Connection, and the Deerfield Valley Community Partnership to present an informational session on the dangers of vaping, and that's going to be Wednesday night from 6:00 to 7:00, and there'll be pizza and light refreshments, but also they, it's not going to be as much of a talk as it is a demonstration. This is what to look for, this is what it looks like, this is what it does to your lungs, and how it's connected to THC, which is marijuana. So we did that. We also support our Early Education Family Outreach Coordinator, Molly Oglesby, that's the grant, and she has monthly meetings in the evening, it's called Just Us Moms Group. She also teamed up for, with Bright Futures, a great session here on Friday, the 20th, Make and Take Day, so that was really wonderful. And we just received a $4,500 grant from Montesutney Hospital and Health Center Prevention Network. I wrote the grant to support our restorative practices initiative, and so what we're getting from this is, we wanted 200, but we're getting 100. It's called Circle Forward, and it's a guide, and so once the teachers move beyond this year and get into really having the circles in their classes and understanding restorative practices and that, building relationships, they can open the guide, and it tells them any kind of meeting you need. So it's just a whole list of guiding people and showing them how to do the meetings, the circles. And so we had a great training on December 20th for the elementary schools, it went really well. Our restorative practices coordinator, Jesse Hall, is also supported by the grant. And so we actually won another grant from the Vermont Agency of Agriculture for $15,000, and this one goes to the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District, and that is, of course, Athens, Grafton, and...
Westminster.
Westminster. And so they're, they've got maintenance of their school gardens, cooking carts, having, you know, evenings, some new equipment. Last year, of course, we got the same grant for Bellas Falls Middle School for a new oven and stove and activities for that, so that's, that's pretty great. The Consolidated Federal Grant also supports our STEAM Coordinator, Christina Smith, as she goes to each school, bringing engineering lessons to our elementary students. We're working hard on having a, well, we're going to have a STEAM curriculum that will be available to all the teachers, it'll be on our new website. Missy writes about all the professional development, the UB Tech, we've talked about, and the grant that Chris wrote to get the UB Tech. The REAL Team is a group of teachers reaching and educating all learners, and that is in conjunction, supported by the CFG, the Consolidated Federal Grants, in conjunction with Landmark College. And so that's going along very well. Again, we had the 20th, we had all the teachers in paraprofessional, have restorative practices overview with the Justice, other Greater Falls Community Justice Center. Central Elementary has their own thing, Leader in Me, the Initiative to Build Stronger Schoolwide Community and Culture for All, so we're all engaging in the restorative practices. Bellas Falls Middle School teachers in paraprofessionals worked on personalized learning plans on the 20th, and the high school had a drill, a mock drill, an evacuation drill, which Chris also wrote about, so that'll be interesting and to read, and that went very successfully. So she talks about the grade level teacher meetings that we had, and they're offering the teachers an opportunity to get a three-credit course through Castleton State called Relational Thinking in the Primary Grades, Foundations of Algebra, and this will take place after school, and I think it's nine sessions, but I'm not sure. So that's an opportunity for us here to have professional development, where the teachers don't have to go anywhere, but put their time in and get a three-credit course, so that's exciting. Andy, our Director of Student Services, Andy Haas, talks about, they're working in a consultation model, and they're consulting with people in the district who need it, they're working to prevent and offer preventative measures that will be beneficial. He talks about their occupational therapist department, sharing their work, what they do across the district, and intensive needs program that we have at Central School, and the new teacher, Dana, is Dana Bellatico, and she's doing a great job. Jesse Hall, our restorative practices coordinator, is talking about cooperation and coordination with the community partner with Greater Falls Community Justice Center, and their PD that we talked about earlier, some of the questions that they ask. Restorative practices also includes two, you know, tier-two and tier-three frameworks, so we're moving along in that. Right now, we're still, you know, just talking to everybody about it, but eventually, we'll all be taking part in it. Harley is talking about the cafe, they had excellent participation numbers for breakfast and lunch, so they served, 32% of the students received a school breakfast each day, and they served 7,224 school lunches in December, which is 59% participation. That's wonderful, there's some beautiful pictures in color, they did do some catering, they had a high volume of orders, which helps them, and there's some pictures of Bellas Falls Middle School putting in their new oven. The stove came in the summer, but the oven just recently came in during the break, and beautiful pictures, beautiful. Ricky's talking about...
Were you the photographer?
No, I wasn't. Ricky is the director, Ricky Adams is the Director of Technology, he's talking again about the grant for UB Tech and those robotic kits, and so they were excited about that, another STEAM option for our teachers. And he's talking about winter maps coming out, and they, and there'll be a training, I'm telling, there's, there's going to be a training on January 21st, and things have been pretty quiet at the technology help desk, seems like people are getting along, kind of fixing their own things somewhat. So that's pretty much, it was pretty full, I think people had time over the break to really fill in and let people know what's going on. So thank you.
Any questions, comments? Moving right along, WNESU Board, I believe there was an SU Board meeting since we last met. There's, there, there's, there is a lot of chatter going on about pairs and support staff pay, payroll getting done efficiently these days, and so David Clark and I have met with the Business Office and Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent last week, and to figure out how to bring the discussion to the SU Board, so we've, Mr. Pratt sent out an email to the entire team, I believe, inviting anybody to come to the next SU Board to kind of get an idea of like what's going on, how we can move through things, so. Sure.
Essentially, the problem is that the pairs are getting their base pay, they're getting their pay for working, but a lot of them have after-school jobs, and several of them may be, a lot of them have two kind of pay slips, so that they're working either for 21st Century, Century, 21st Century, which is the after-school program at Westminster, or they're working for Title One, or they're working for AIM, which is the after, 21st Century at the middle school, and some of those timesheets are not getting to where they need to be, or just complicating them. So most of those, not everyone, but I would say 99%, are, they're not getting their second pay, or their, their extra money from working in the afternoon for their school day.
Is, like, with their regular, with their regular paycheck? Edie was, when we met the other day, Edie was talking about how, you know, there's like six different codes for all the, you know, for all the different things that people do, and it's, you know, it's kind of cumbersome and difficult. So anyways, we're going to bring it up at the SU, next SU meeting to see, work our way through that. And invited anybody to come and let us know, because we've been trying to hear both sides to make sure that, you know, and get both sides presented to the Board, so we can get a full understanding of what people's concerns are on this side, and what the concerns are, and what causes issues on this side. They do have a new person starting in the Business Office.
Next week.
Next week, next Monday, I believe, that should help some. Committees, we have nothing. Budget discussion and preparation. We have nothing new for our budget at this point. Edie was working this weekend and today, and I believe she's upstairs working now, to try to finish getting the SU budget put together, so that all the other boards would have that information in their budgets.
If the SU, when is the SU meeting to vote on that budget?
22nd.
So does that mean that we won't, Rockingham will not have a good budget until after that?
I don't believe we will have a good budget till after that night, because our next meeting is on Martin Luther King Day, which is a holiday, we, one of the things we need to decide tonight is, do we want to have an interim budget meeting between now and then, so that we, so I believe if their next meeting is the 22nd, when would that make it, hour?
And when do we have to have budgets completed by?
Yesterday.
Well... Are you just being slightly, right?
I'm being slightly.
Yeah.
So if, if the SU meets on the 22nd, then we wouldn't have our next meeting, would it be until the 3rd?
And there is, I know, a deadline, that we have to have it completed by, I can't remember what that is.
I can't either.
Lynn, it might be helpful, is Edie still upstairs?
Yes, would you like me?
Yeah, could you just ask her that question?
Just, yeah, instead of making her traipse down, just ask her if she knows when we have to have our budget completed.
When Rockingham budget has to be...
Yeah.
Finished. Finished.
When we have, when we...
For the town report.
When we have to approve it. When we have to have it approved by. So maybe instead of trying to schedule something now, I should work with Chris and Edie to find out when we will have information, how much information that they have that they think will be fairly solid, and perhaps we should try to meet after the SU meeting, if we think that their budget is going to be approved, so that we'll have solid numbers from there, and maybe we can ash out ours and approve it. Now, I was hoping that we were going to be here tonight, because I don't know if everything has been, you know, we talked about the auditorium, I don't know if any of that got added in, I don't know if everything is updated.
I added in, under Rick's budget, under capital outlay, in his budget, the auditorium estimate, and so I put that in, but I know that we, you know, there was discussion about using some of the reserve funds, but the way that I understood our last meeting ended was, go ahead and put it all in, and it can be looked at when the budget, yeah, was revised. I emailed Edie, telling her to put in another FTE for the foreign language person as well, so that I left right now, so if you vote on the foreign language person, I would remove the $6,000, Middlebury, that's in there, but right now, I did leave that in my budget as well, because I didn't want to take something out until we had a definite on that, and that could also adjust the capital outlay amount, but that's as far as the middle school budget goes.
And that wasn't clear, that we had decided whether we wanted to eliminate Middlebury if we approved an FTE?
I think we did.
We did decide to do it.
I knew it was in the minutes last time.
Yeah, we've been talking back and forth about whether we want to do one or vote.
I think it really depended on, well, it depended on how, I guess in my mind, it would depend on how the foreign language teacher was structured. If it's a one, you know, full-time staff person teaching five through eight, then it wouldn't make sense to keep Middlebury, right?
Right.
That, that would be, you know, my recommendation.
What about keeping ours? Do you feel like your budgets are pretty... And what about keeping Laura's, do you feel like your budgets are pretty well done from the last time you seen them?
No, I've got several personnel things I've talked to Edie about, and I don't think those things have been...
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of juggling up there.
We may, so, we may have to have a sep... We may have to have separate budget meetings, both before and after.
We haven't had one.
No, we've had some...
Discussion.
Eliminary reviews and discussions, but...
So your budget needs to be done by the 20th of January.
What?
That's what she told me. So right now, she's finishing the SU tomorrow, and then she'll go to work on the high school, which is meeting next Monday, but if you could plan a meeting for the 14th or the 15th?
Well, I will, I will contact, I will email you two.
Email them.
Priscilla and George, and see if we can figure out some way to fit, and I'll include you three, because I think you need to be there, and see if there's some way we can fit in a budget meeting on the 14th or the 15th. Do you know when the SU's next budget meeting is? Off the top of your head, the zip post is out here on the wall.
I believe it's the 22nd. I'll double check.
So there's, it will be impossible for us to approve our budget by the 20th if they're not meeting until the 22nd?
Do you want to go up and confer with Edie to double check?
Do you think I should?
There just seems to be some confusion, and rather than...
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to say this on TV, but I...
I'll go look at the wall and I'll go check. Does anybody want a candy wall up there?
What, they've got candy?
They've got...
Wednesday, the 8th.
So they have a, they have a budget meeting this Wednesday, the 8th, okay?
They do. Wait, that's the high school. And then the high school has a budget meeting on the 9th. Should we leave it as you will speak with...
I will speak with Edie and Chris and the SU staff.
And then we'll try to schedule a meeting?
Yeah. I'll talk with, um, David about the SU budget, and if they're, where they are with that. So if they're meeting Wednesday, for some reason I, for some reason I thought we had an SU meeting Wednesday anyways, and it's the budget meeting, so I will try to make it to that SU meeting and see what happens there, and then Wednesday night or Thursday, I will reach out to you folks and say, what can we do? But I think we need to, like, somehow we need to, like, get together and, like, go through it, like, it's not, it's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be at least two meetings to get through it.
Sometimes you go through it a little bit too fast, but, I mean, right now, it's like, she's a big...
Yeah, right now it's a piece of paper with lots of questions that were unanswered. I, and we've seen the expenditure budget, but I haven't seen the, we haven't seen a revenue budget yet, so.
So, um, it's true that she's hoping when the SU budget meets on Wednesday, uh, it'll go well, and it'll be all set, and then at the high school on the 9th, again, the budget, and she's hoping to have the assessment and everything for the high school, so when you meet 14th or 15th, um...
Well, we're probably gonna have to try to meet before then, even if we need to have it done by the 20th.
Is there, my question is, is there a... Who's meeting on the 13th? If the high school's meeting... Well, their budget committee is meeting on the 9th. Right, oh, but their regular meeting is on the 13th?
Yeah.
I'm wondering if their regular meeting is at 6:30, or 6, I don't know, if your budget could meet prior on the 13th, which would be a regular meeting at, meet at 5:30?
Yeah, well, I would like, so what we said is, I'll, I'll talk to Chris and David and Edie, and see where things fall Wednesday, and try to get something scheduled for as soon as possible next week.
Do you know if, uh, if the SU budget is still, the plan is to have it level funded? Is that still the plan?
That was the plan last I heard.
Okay.
Which was only a few days ago. So I'm gonna skip over, is there, I don't, got nothing else to talk about, about budget?
If, if Edie has the budget for us done, is there a way we can come and pick it up for the meeting?
Well, I'll, if, I will, and that's what I had asked for yesterday, the day before, when she said she wasn't gonna be able to be here for budget stuff, I was like, well, have you made any of the changes that we did talk about at the last meeting, and do you have anything ready that we can at least look at and start to prove? So I will push for that as well, I'll see if I can get a copy of whatever she has, so that we can start to look at it, and I will either drop copies off at your houses or email that, or both.
Or even if it's on the drive, then we can...
Well, I have a hard time reading stuff on the drive, but I'll drive up here and pick it up.
Well, I drive by almost every day, I have to.
Okay.
I drive, I drive about the same distance between by ear and your house, so it's... Then you can't say, "I didn't have time."
But there's also Priscilla and...
There's also Priscilla and George, and I can easily get George a copy, and Priscilla, isn't she in Hawaii or something?
Oh, yeah, she is.
Yeah, she is right now.
Yeah. Um, so maybe we can at least put one in the mail for her, if she gets back, she can, she can get it, so. I'm gonna skip over board goals and discussions, um, update on support staff negotiation, executive session likely, we'll save that for the very end. Board seats terms attached, so I know every year it's kind of confusing as to whose seat is expiring, so you two need to get petitions in.
So there are two seats that are coming up for...
Two seats that are coming up for reelection.
Re-election this year, there are two two-year terms, and currently are held by myself and Kristen.
So Kristen's is a two-year term, and yours is a two-year term.
And mine is a two-year term.
Okay.
I was filling one year of a two-year term.
Okay. Did you hear that, people out there in the world? Especially those of you who think you could help us and do better, and...
So you can, what did you say about picking up petitions?
Picking up petitions, get a petition, get your signatures, get it in, get on the ballot. You can do it.
So you pick up petitions at the town hall, um, up in the town clerk's office, and petitions, we don't have the deadline of when they're due, but they're usually due sometime right before the end of January, so we encourage you to go pick up a petition for a two-year term and get on the ballot.
This was our first year in six years I've been doing this, that we started the year with a full board, and it'd be really nice to do it one more year, or many more years. Um, appointments done, directors' comments.
Just encourage people to go petition and run.
So I'm assuming that means you're not getting a petition?
No.
No. Okay, um, agenda items for the next board meeting, budget, budget, budget. Date of next board meeting, I'm assuming is going to be, the, the date of our next regular meeting will be February 3rd, and we'll just have it here out of ease.
Okay. So the January 20th?
The January 20th is Martin Luther King Day, everyone here will be off, it's a holiday. It's a holiday that I know our company tries to respect, and make sure that everyone has the day off, and I think we should follow that, but we will be having special budget meeting or two in between.
Yes. Do we need to have executive session for staff? Support staff negotiations? You said we'd skip it for now and put it at the end.
Yeah.
Coming to the end.
We should have a brief, we should have a brief one, so...
So I'll make a motion that we...
Before you, before you do that, I have to remind people that this Wednesday night at 6:30 is the third round of the Let's Take Action meetings with the Village of Rockingham, Town of Rockingham, Town Hall, 6:30 Wednesday night, so those conversations about education and housing and recreation, all that's gonna continue, and towns will start to take shape then, so we can get some people there, that'd be really great.
I wasn't able to make it to the last one, but I had heard that they were some of the more, it seemed like some of the more productive and actually, like, might have some traction and a lot of things like that.
The last go-round was the nine separate conversations, and now, just to bring it back to you, it should be interesting.
Can you remind me of your next board meeting? February 3rd, 5:30 here. We're not going to adjourn, and we're not going to take any action out of our executive session, so...
But we are going to, I'll make a motion to go into executive session where...
Discuss, acknowledge.
...
Done, done. Thank you, everybody.